Mickey said he says it's gonna be late, so at this point I'm gonna open the meeting and welcome everyone to the Town of Wakefield Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting for Wednesday, April twenty-third. Remind everyone that the meeting is being recorded. Will be available on for replaying Town's website for a few days and then within the next few days. Start the roll call, Chip Tarbell.
Here.
Dave Hatfield.
Here.
Joe Pride.
Here.
Kasumi Humphries.
Yeah.
Kirsten Brown.
Here.
And then my name's Tom Lucy, obviously, I am here. With that, I'm gonna ask Board Clerk, Joe Pride, to read the legal notice.
Sure thing, Mr. Chair, consistent with the Governor's orders extending certain provisions of the open meeting law, every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to this meeting in real time. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial in number one, three oh one, seven one five, eight five nine two, meeting ID eight five six, eight eight six four, one 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 five, passcode two two seven, two zero zero. Please only use dial in or computer and not both, as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded. In compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, this location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and or language assistance free of charge upon request if you are a person with a disability and require information or materials in an alternate format, or if you require any other accommodations, please contact the Town's Disability Coordinator, William Rock Town Engineer, at seven eight one, two four six, six three zero eight, as far in advance of the event as possible. Every effort will be made to grant your request. Advance on location will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove an accessibility barrier for you. One, continued hearings. Two, twenty-five dash thirty, Eric K. Palmason and Jennifer Hicks' application for determinations and or finding with respects to a continuation and extension of nonconforming uses under Article Nine, Section one ninety dash fifty, pursuant to Articles Nine, Section one ninety dash fifty-eight of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to construct. In addition on to an existing single-family dwelling, the property is shown as map sixty lot parcel forty-eight of the assessors map and is located at nineteen Pittman Avenue, Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Joe. First up is is our custom, we we do have a request for continuance and it happens to be the first continued matter anyway. I'm in possession of a letter from Attorney Brian McGrail dated today to the board regarding L and L Development LLC at one fifty-four, one fifty-eight Salem Street, case number twenty-five, twenty-one, twenty-five, twenty-two. Please continue this matter until your meeting on May fourteenth and that we are still working on revising plans and drainage report and we plan on meeting with the Designated Board of Appeals member Chip Tarbell in that regard prior to that time. Thank you for consideration. We're looking for a continuation until May fourteenth. Dave, you're on mute.
Yes, I am, Mr. Chair. I make a motion that we continue the matter at one fifty-four to one fifty-eight Salem Street to our meeting on May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion or comment? Hearing seeing none, regular voting members and Kasumi, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Kasumi.
Yes.
And I vote yes, that matter is continued. Next up is four-ten Main Street. GCT, it's case number twenty-five, twenty-six for signage. Believe I see Attorney McGrail on the screen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Attorney Brian McGrail representing GCT Inc. Property at four-ten Main Street in Wakefield. To refresh the board's memory, this is a fast food special permit and parking special permit that was granted, were both granted by the board at your last meeting. The the third aspect of this proposal was a request for a special permit as it relates to signage on the building for the use and and at that meeting, the board asked us to go back and do some more homework in two regards. First of all, board wanted us to speak with the franchisor to to see if there was flexibility as it relates to their sign design with the colors in in graphics that were presented. We did obtain a letter from the franchisor in that regard. I submitted that to the board on Friday. I'm happy to go through that if you deem it necessary, Mr. Chair, or perhaps a letter speaks for itself. That's up to you.
Why don't you just give a brief overview? And before you do that, I just want to note that member Mickey Feeley has joined the meeting.
Okay. So in that regard, this is from Gongcha and basically I'll read it. It's easier than than just kind of paraphrasing it. So it's it states, I am writing to provide clarity and support regarding the signage proposal submitted by our Gongcha franchisee Kelvin Kelvin Guan, currently applying for a special permit in your town. Gongcha is in the process of rolling out a refreshed brand concept across key markets, including New York City and select upcoming franchise locations nationwide. As part of this initiative, the updated signage design features raised lettering in a modern aesthetic that aligns with our current branding direction. This concept is part of the national branding strategy intended to unify the customer experience across all locations, enhance visibility and reflect the premium nature of our products. This time, there are no existing Gongcha locations in Massachusetts utilizing this new signage, so we were, we are unable to provide an in-state example. However, this store would serve as one of the first to implement the new concept in this, in set the standard for future openings in the region. We respectfully request that the town consider this context in their evaluation and permit process. Due to the franchisees alignment with our updated corporate standards, we are unable to approve signage that deviates from this concept, including older styles used in other cities. Please feel free to reach, feel free to reach out if additional information, visuals, and design details are needed to support this process. We are committed to working collaboratively with the town to ensure a smooth approval and a positive addition to the community. Assigned by Angel Cologne, Director of Development Operations. So that was something the board asked, and I think more importantly, you know, I don't think the board, my recollection has had a real significant issue with the sign. You wanted, the board asked for more detail on the sign and also the board took note that the sign that we have presented provided options for a smaller sign that might be appropriate, more appropriate on the facade of the built of the building. So we submitted two renderings to the board. The other thing I should mention that the board mentioned was we had proposed four goose neck lights. Originally, you may recall, and Mr. Tarbell suggested that three might be more appropriate. So we we've submitted now two concept plans, one, the original size sign, which I'll share. And then we submitted a smaller size sign. And when I bring those up, I can go through the details of the differences. I'd also like to point out that Kelvin Guan is here as the applicant. And I also brought Juan Jeremillo. He is from Sophie's Tech, which is our sign company in case any of the board members have direct questions for him as far as installation or materials or anything of that sort. So is it okay if I share my screen again, Mr. Chair?
Please do.
Great. So what I'm bringing up on the screen is the original sized sign that we have proposed. This is the twelve-foot by thirty-six-inch high. But the board wanted more detail on this as far as the the raising of the letters. These these PVC letters are raised off of the board approximately a couple of inches. The other change that we did on this on this sign, we didn't, again, this does not change the sign size, but we made it a matte finish instead of a shiny finish. And Juan thought it would be, it would be a better look for downtown because it won't glare with the matte finish. The board also wanted us to specify a little bit more detail on the on the goose necks, which is done on this side of the screen. And you also wanted us to specify what the Kelvin would be on the light temperature. So we've spec'd thirty-three hundred. The board usually, as you know, requires or requests twenty-seven hundred to thirty-three hundred. Juan thought thirty-three hundred would be appropriate with the matte finish. It won't glare, according to him, and he can talk to you about that if you'd like. He thought with a shiny finish, thirty-three hundred would be too high. It would almost be like a, it would, it would take away from the sign and be a glare when you looked at it. So this is the bigger sign. I'll blow it up. It is a bit bigger than the charm sign, as you can see. So this gives you one look, but we've again brought it down to three goose necks. So I'm gonna stop sharing this and I'm gonna bring up the other option for your consideration, which is a smaller sign, which is one-twenty by thirty inches instead of thirty-six inches high. And the board wanted to look at this sign. If you you would might recall the chart down below. Mr. Tarbell had mentioned there were other options and and Chip wanted to see this sign. He thought this size might be more appropriate. And to be honest, from our perspective, after looking at it, we think this is appropriate. It really matches the charm sign, we think, better. And it really fits in there well, but that's for your board to decide. And again, this has the same specs as the other one with the goose necks and the temperature. With that said, Mr. Chair, we're happy to entertain any questions or or take comment.
So pleasure of the board, questions, comments? Kasumi, I see your hand up.
I definitely like the smaller size because the the older one, the bigger size, seems like the Gongcha is like the occupying the whole building and charm is kind of like a secondary tenant. But now it seems more, a little bit more balanced. I feel like you can go down to the two goose neck. So it matches with the charm because three seems a little bit too too many now with the smaller size. That's only, that's only my comment.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I I like the smaller sign. I would be careful whether it's three or, you know, I could live with two goose necks as well to make it more matching and uniform. I would just want to make sure that the goose necks and the top of the charm sign and the top of the Gongcha sign were at the same height so that the goose necks were at the same same height and that the signs were at the same height. Tough to tell if that's what the perspective or idea was on these because they look a little bit off just from a scale standpoint, but I know. So that would be my only comment. I appreciate the matte finish and is the Chinese on the end also raised, not just the letters?
Bye Ken, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna have Juan respond to that and also talk to the number of goose necks our sign contractor. That's why I brought him.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Juan, can you do the question on the goose necks first and then whether the the Chinese symbol on the end is raised also?
Okay, yes. The reason because I would suggest to do three goose necks is because if you if we put two, we're gonna see a night, a couple dark spots there that are not gonna get any uniformity on the sign. And I think if we put two, we're gonna have a couple really dark spots and we have to consider the sign is a little bit longer than the one from the restaurant. And that's only a suggestion. The other the other question you have is about putting the goose necks on the same line as the ones on the restaurant. And yes, that's the case. We're just gonna line the sign pretty much the same at the same level of the other one. We're gonna make it the same size, so which is gonna be thirty inches. That's the actual size of the sign that is on the restaurant. And and the other question is a thirty-three KB, that will be like a low yellow light, warm. And that would, that wouldn't create any glare on the sign. And I want to clarify something on the sign. It only comes out half an inch. The PVC lettering only comes half an inch. And to respond to the last question, the sign at the the restaurant is flat. It doesn't have letters coming up. It's just a flat sign.
Why can't the end be raised as well? Why can't the?
Oh, they they're gonna have to make a new one. They they had it there for a long time.
Juan, I think the confusion is Chip. What he's saying is the charm sign is flat.
Well, I don't care about the charm sign. We're not talking about the charm.
So what what the board member is asking, Juan, at the end of Gongcha, there's a, there's a symbol?
Yeah. That's also raised.
That's also raised out.
Yes, it's also raised, yeah.
And how come it's only raised off a half an inch?
That that's the, that's the thickness of the material we use in the PVC. So it's gonna be flush on the on the actual sign, on the background. And it comes out a half an inch. We can do three quarters or half an inch.
I'd rather see a three quarter, I'd rather see a greater amount of definition so that you get some shadowing and
Yeah, we can do that.
As flat.
Yeah. Do you, do you agree with me about the three goose neck lights or we're still keeping?
I'm fine with the three goose necks because of the light.
It's a little longer, so you're gonna have a couple wave spots there that are not gonna illuminate the whole sign all the time.
Yeah, I just, because of this, I think it's an optics thing that the three goose necks, that they look smaller on the Gongcha sign than they do on the charm sign.
Yes.
So I just want to make sure that those are the exact same light spec. Because they don't, they don't come through in this as the same.
Yes, actually, the owner is gonna change the lights on the restaurant as well, so they're gonna be exactly the same lights and all, all five lights are gonna be exactly the same.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So if we move forward, whoever makes the motion, we might want to just condition a special permit for the three quarters that Chip was seeking on the and to make sure that the lights and the signs are at the same level.
Agreed, but we'd wanted an updated plan that shows it, so it's in the record.
But they could put that in there as long as we condition it, we're we're covered.
Sure.
Any other comments, questions?
No, Mr. Chair, I I had similar questions that were already raised and given the discussion, I'm I'm good with what's been presented and the adjustments that have been agreed to. I'm good.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing seeing none. At this point, I'm gonna open it up to the members of the public. That there's someone here who wishes to weigh in on this application and what the, what has been presented tonight, please use the raise hand function and zoom. Brian, if you could just stop sharing so I can see if people are trying to raise their hand. Thank you. Okay, seeing none, going once, twice. Public comment is closed. Pleasure of the board. If there's no further comments or questions, we'll be ready for a motion.
Yep, Mr. Chair, I'm just getting my thoughts together here.
Right here, yeah.
So raised lettering.
That was three quarters.
Yep. And same. So the sign and lighting to the same height as the neighboring, right?
Yep.
Charm Bistro. As well as the usual retaining jurisdiction on any minor mods and any of that.
Yeah.
Those are usual boilerplate. Okay. So, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we grant a special permit pursuant to Article sixteen, Section one ninety, one oh one F and Article eight, Section one ninety, forty-two and forty-four of the zoning bylaw providing relief from the requirements of Article sixteen, including, but not limited to Sections one ninety, ninety-nine, one ninety, one hundred, and one ninety, one oh one to allow the wall sign on the property as shown on the sign plan by Sophie's Tech. There's no date on it, but by by that company. And in doing so, the board finds that the use makes the following findings. The requested use requires a special permit in the district for which the applicant, uh, application is made. The requested use is essential and or desirable to public convenience or welfare. The requested use will not create any undue, add or undue traffic congestion or unduly impaired pedestrian safety. The requested use will not overload any public water drainage sewer system or any other municipal system for such an extent that the requested use or any of the developed use in the immediate area or any other area of the town will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, and general welfare. The requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts nor be detrimental to the public health, convenience, or welfare. The requested use will not by its addition to the neighborhood cause an excess of that particular use that could be detrimental to the character of said neighborhood. In addition to these findings, the board also determines that the approved sign is in reasonable relation to development scale, viewer distance, travel speed, and sign sizes on nearby structures. The approved signs' size, shape, and placement serve to define or enhance the architectural elements of the building. The approved sign is in harmony with other signage on the same and adjacent structures. The approved sign material, colors, lettering style, and form reasonably comparable to the building design, neighborhood context, and use. The approved sign, location, and design do not present a safety hazard to vehicular or pedestrian safety. And the information submitted to the board is adequate and to the extent necessary complies with Sections one ninety, one oh one, A, B, and C of the zoning bylaw. And this permit is granted with the following conditions. The board retained jurisdiction to approve any minor modifications of this decision that do not materially alter the terms of this decision. If, in the board's judgment, a proposed change is material, then a new hearing shall be required to amend this decision. The board retains jurisdiction to make any more clarifications of this decision, which cannot be resolved by the building inspector or zoning enforcement officer. That the raised lettering as presented on the sign plan this evening will be three-quarters of an inch in height versus the half an inch shown in the sign plan. And the sign and lighting of this at this location will be the same height as the neighboring Charm Bistro location. That is the motion, Mr. Chair.
Second that motion.
Hey, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes, I think we should modify it with just a simple word. I think they've said that the the height of the letters on the sign will be three-quarters of an inch. It should be the depth of the sign, of the letter. She'll be three-quarters of an inch.
Duly noted. Has amended the the depth of all the lettering and the symbols.
Height at three-quarters of an inch might be a little tough to see.
Agree.
We'll take that as a friendly amendment. So that motion's been made?
I'll second the amendment motion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing seeing none, regular voting members. Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Mickey. You're on mute, but I thought I saw yes, so I'll take that as a yes. And I vote yes, touching hands. Okay, thank you. Appreciate you coming back and working with the board on the sign and best of luck with your business.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is a new hearing, case twenty-five thirty at nineteen Pittman Avenue. Mr. McGrail, I believe this is yours.
It is my case. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record, Attorney Brian McGrail here on behalf of Eric Palmason and Jennifer Hicks. They are the owners of property at nineteen Pittman Avenue. They are logged on tonight. Also with me is Casey Brunel, who was the project architect on this matter. The Palmasons are looking to put an addition on their single-family dwelling located at nineteen Pittman Ave. The application that has been filed in that regard is under one ninety fifty A of our zoning bylaw, Article nine, requesting a determination indoor. In this case, it will be a finding for the extension of a pre-existing legal nonconforming structure. I think the best way to go about this, I have architectural plans that were submitted and also Site Civil. And if I may, Mr. Chair, I would like to share the architectural first.
Please do.
Then move on to the Site Civil. I think it will set the table for the board on what we're doing here and make the review of the Site Civil a little bit easier and with more clarity. So this is, this is the architectural floor plans of nineteen Pittman. The front of the house, you can see nineteen Pittman Ave is up top, so this is Pittman Avenue. This is the front of the house. All activity on this addition is gonna be in the rear. You can see kind of this missing gap in the back on the first floor. When we go to the proposed, you'll see that that is being filled in. And then there's going to be an addition that's gonna go on the top of, this is an existing first floor. We're gonna add to the top of that. And then we're gonna fill in this space and partially add to the top of this with also a single-story component in the back. It will get a little clearer when we show the elevations. So this is how it, how it gets filled in. This piece gets filled in. It goes out a little bit further. And the further part is single-story and up top will be two-story. And then this is the second story that gets filled in, which you'll see in a minute. We're gonna have a bath, closet, and then the single-story addition below for extra living space for the family. This kind of paints a better picture of it. So if you look at the rear elevation first, you'll see how this is currently existing on the first floor where the store is and there's being an addition constructed above it. And then it blends into the new total two-story addition here on this side with a one-story component that comes further back. And dimensionally, you can kind of see it here when you look at the west elevation. So up top is being filled in and added on to on the other side with the one-story component coming off of the back. And this is the other side where this is a complete addition here and the one-story is an addition off the back. So I thought that would be helpful to to set the table and now I'm gonna move to the the site plan. This is the site plan that was prepared by Ed Farrell, and this is where you can see in the back that it says proposed second-story addition. So these kind of circular areas is where the first story already exists. They're gonna build up on top of that. And then this hashed area is the the complete proposed addition. It says two-story, as I've explained, a component of it that sticks out is gonna be single-story. This is a pretty straightforward application, as I've mentioned. It's a finding. There is an intensification of existing nonconformity, so there must be a finding by the board that it's not substantially more detrimental. And probably the best way to go about that is looking at the zoning table down below. As you can see, this is in the single residence district, so the required lot area is twelve thousand. The existing and proposed are four thousand. Minimum lot width.
Brian, can you just zoom in on the zoning table for us?
Yep, I can. Is that better, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, much better. Thank you.
Right, okay. So again, twelve thousand square feet is required and four thousand is existing and obviously proposed, no change. Lot width is one hundred feet is required and we have forty and forty because it's a perfectly shaped rectangular lot. Minimum frontage is a hundred feet. This is a legal nonexist, pre-existing legal nonconforming lot. Minimum frontage is a hundred feet, this is a legal nonexist, preexisting legal nonconforming lot. With forty forty feet, so all of these three components are preexisting legal nonconforming. The minimum front yard setback in this district is twenty, currently it's five feet. And it's not being changed or extended, again, preexisting legal nonconforming. The setback, this is the first intensification of a nonconforming component. On the east side fifteen feet is required, the existing is four point four. And we're going, we're requesting to go to four point three. I'm just going to shrink this down to highlight where that is. It's right where the addition goes in the back, the single story component. Because it's currently four point four and just the angle that the house sits on, it just tweaks in a little bit to four point three. The setback on the other side is fifteen feet is required and it's going to be the eleven point three, which it currently is, so there's no intensification on that. Minimum rear setback, it's forty six point four, he did it forty seven point eight because he factored with the addition. But in any event, it's not even close, it easily meets the rear setback requirements. Lot coverage is where there is another intensification of an existing nonconformity. The lot coverage requirement is thirty percent, existing is thirty one point two. So that's going to get intensified to thirty four point three because of the addition. So we have two nonconforming components being intensified. And then open area requirement is forty percent, existing is fifty point three, proposed is forty seven point one, it will be in full compliance. So what we're what we're requesting here is we're requesting a finding. That although there are two intensifications of legal nonconformities, that being. The setback on the east side going four point four to four point three. And the lot coverage going from thirty one point two to thirty point thirty four point three. Where we respectfully suggest that notwithstanding the intensifications. Of those nonconformities that they are not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. In that regard, my clients have met with their neighbors. And particularly the folks that would be impacted by the intensification on the side with the four point three. We have submitted a neighborhood support. Which I'll share that the neighbors are in full support and have requested that the board approve this request. Let me just bring that up. And I submitted this into the record, Mr. Chair, you should have a copy of this.
Yeah.
So the folks on both sides are included here, twenty one Pittman Ave and seventeen Pittman. Both sides. The Lawlers and the Hardings. That said, Mr. Chair, happy to answer any questions the board may have and happy to bring up whatever plans any board members would like us to share.
Brian, do you have the distance between the houses? On that side?
See Chip. That will be an existing, let me see. We bring it up over, Chip, I don't think we have an exact.
But you're not even, is that a preexisting?
It would be preexisting.
It would be, but how close are we?
I'm going to, I'm going to show you in a sec, hold on.
But we don't know what the footage is?
No.
I think in the future, that's important to know.
While you're pulling that up, we do have some correspondence from town departments, I'll read those into the record. Have a letter from Chief Michael Sullivan, the Wakefield Fire Department. The Wakefield Fire Department has asked to review the application for a special permit to construct the addition to his existing single family dwelling after reviewing the application. The department has no objections to this project. Have a memo here from the Department of Public Works Engineering Department. On this, we offer the following comment, the town has awarded a contract to repave a number of streets in the town, including Pittman. Avenue, it's recommended that the applicant reach out to the engineering division to coordinate their construction project with the town's paving projects. Mr. McGrail, if you and your client can take note of that. If this in fact does move forward. Have a memo also from the conservation agent regarding this. They have reviewed the application. And the proposed work is not within the commission's jurisdiction pursuant to Wetlands Act MGL one thirty one, chapter forty, however. The commission recommends as always that the applicant hear to good housekeeping practices during the execution of the project, including but not limited to sedimentation control. Dust control, pavement sweeping, minimize tracking and protection of drainage inlet structures or catch bases if there are any nearby. That's the entirety of what we have from town departments.
Yeah, and Mr. Tabell's comment is a point well taken, and and Casey, if you cut on your, do you? Can you tell the distance between the house next door, Casey, do you know that?
I don't have an exact dimension, hi everyone.
Ballpark?
Nice to be here, there is a full driveway on the house that is going to be more extreme. So on the east side, there's a driveway separating nineteen Pittman and the house. So I would be able to, I guess, guess that it's going to be similar to the west side condition, which is roughly eleven seven point seven. Plus, plus the the side that's on the nineteen property, yep.
Yeah, so this helps Chip and the point, and thanks for bringing that up, the point is well taken and irrelevant. So, you know, I I would say Chip, within that twenty feet, so I think, you know, I would request that the finding contemplate that too. Because it's because you have the twenty foot separation, we're clearly within twenty feet, so the finding would need to incorporate also that as a nonconformity.
That was my thought.
Yeah, it's it's a point well taken, thank you.
So in the future, Brian, on on these that, you know. We're often going to get smaller lots. We should just have, the site plan should include the law, the houses on either side, just so we have that knowledge.
Yeah, understood.
And it looks like the house on the left that we're talking about is already done, they're pushed back, so. I have no problem with that, I'm just curious, so thank you for the picture.
No, we'd like, we'd like that incorporated in the finding if the board decides to go forward, this is. Is is kind of the third nonconformity of intensive, even though it's a very slight intensification of. Like a tenth of a foot, a foot or whatever it is, we'd like it included.
And Brian, doesn't Ben have the the ability to approve these on his own?
Not this, because what's happening.
Because of that inch?
Just because, yeah, we we've got two preexisting nonconformities and. And so so Ben can only approve it if there's not an intensification of nonconformities and here we have. Actually, three intensifications, we have the setback, we have the block coverage and then the, you know, the distance between the neighboring houses.
Okay, thank you for that.
Chip, thank you, anybody else?
No, Mr. Chair, I'm fine with it, seems like a reasonable modification to the property. And I have no problem with the the standards for the finding in this case.
Anybody else? Okay, hearing seeing none from the board members at this time, I'm going to open it up to the public. Is there anybody here that's here to testify on this application? If so, please use the raised hand function in Zoom. Small crowd tonight, I don't see anybody going once, going twice. Public comment is closed. The applicant realizes benefit of the Celtics playing right now, so back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion that we grant the finding and determination pursuant to section one ninety fifty A of the zoning by law. That the proposed reconstruction changes, extensions and alterations at nineteen Pittman Avenue. Based on the plans presented this evening. Including the site plan from Edward J. Farrell dated April tenth, twenty twenty five, and the architectural renderings from Casey Brownwell. Or Brunel dated April tenth, twenty twenty five. Shall increase. The existing nonconforming nature of the structure. With respect to the side setback on the east side, the lot coverage. And the distance to the neighboring structures on the adjacent property. But we find that the proposed reconstruction changes, extensions and alterations. Shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconformities to the neighborhood.
The motion's been made and seconded, any further discussion from the board? Hearing seeing non regular voting members, Dave.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Chip.
Yes.
Mickey.
Yes.
I vote yes as well, that's unanimous. Good luck with your project.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, other matters, first up sixty two Foundry Street, seventy six Foundry Street. Sixty two Foundry LLC request. For minor modification.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Attorney Brian McGrail here on behalf of the current owner of the property, Wakefield Living LLC. Which is a subsidiary of the DiBiase Companies, Hugo DiBiase is online. This was, this was, we requested this be put on the agenda for twofold. Either a minor modification or a pre-application meeting is is allowed by zoning by law. To refresh the board's memory, this is the fifty eight unit multifamily. That is currently under construction at sixty two seventy six Foundry Street, the former site of the Taylor Storage Building and and Crystal Lumber. The property is almost completed, this is going to be condominiums for sale, not a rental building. We're happy to report that the marketing of the units is going very well. We anticipate commencing closing, selling units in the month of May. The lottery has been held for the affordable units, so the DiBiases is as usual, protocol with them are right on top of everything. And you've probably seen it, we will be, you know, asking for. Tonight also for a designated board member to come out and take a look at landscaping, et cetera. Is in the next, within the next, probably the next meeting, we'll be looking for certificate of occupancy. But what we want to discuss in a little bit more detail tonight is. Part of this project, it was permitted as a mixed use for residential and specifically a restaurant use of approximately three thousand square foot. Restaurant. The DiBiases have been marketing that restaurant with a restaurant broker for over a year now with no success. They've had a number of showings, number of viewings, and the consistent feedback that they're getting is that. It's just not a great site at this point in time for a restaurant because the street is not fully developed. This, the street's in tough shape, it's going to, it's going to get paved, the DiBiases are going to be responsible for their share, eventually the town will do the other end. But it it's just not conducive right now. You know, we we all think that this will eventually become a lifestyle area, but it's not conducive for that at this point. So what the DiBiases are requesting, and 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 since we put this on the agenda, we think it would be probably more appropriate. As a formal application to come back for the board. But we'd like to have a discussion on this as a pre-application to that. Of the idea of allowing this to be an office use in that area. Instead of a restaurant, not foregoing the opportunity for a restaurant in the future because we think that might be a great. Spot for that at some point. The DiBiases intend to hold on to this commercial unit is in in their portfolio, so they're going to own it and what their desire is at this point. Is to build it out as an office and to move their corporate offices in there, so not to rent it as an office that they would actually use it. They currently have their corporate offices in the multifamily mixed use project that they did in Reading. The Postmark, they've had a great location there, but they'd like to move their offices to Wakefield, so they'd like to build out this three thousand square foot area. At this point in time to use it as their offices. I will say that it is fully, it has been fully built with plumbing, infrastructure in the unit. Venting that it can be a restaurant, so it's not foregoing the possibility of that happening in the future as this area develops more. So what we would like, Mr. Chair, is to maybe get, you know, some of the initial thoughts on that concept with the board. And if it's it's something that the board might be willing to entertain, then we would file for a formal modification of the existing permits. Think it would have to be a formal because part of the relief that we got for this project was parking. And that was related to the mixed use of the restaurant component. And even though the office use would have a lesser demand for parking, that relief was specific as it relates to the restaurant. So for the integrity of the permitting aspects of the of the project, you know, we believe after looking at it closely, it would need a formal modification with legal notice. And public notice and public hearing.
Yeah, great, I agree, you want to protect yourself from some neighbor, you know, appeal on that, so it will cause in trouble if it. Does go to an office use, but I'd be interested to hear what the board has to say. I see Chip, Chip's hands up.
Yeah, I'm I'm fine with, I understand how, you know, we've heard this a couple times. The intent certainly was to get a restaurant in there, we've done that. Numerous times and people have had trouble doing that. I get the street, I've driven down there, it's tough until more gets developed and until that gets fixed. You know, I'm not sure I'm sitting outside on that street dining. I'm, I do agree that it should be a formal application, just in case somebody. You know, bought a condo across the street and wants to verbalize that he has a problem with it becoming office. I would just say whatever the language should be, it should be office and or restaurant for use. So that in the future, if they had a tenant that did show up in two years, five years, ten years. That it could quickly be be converted back to a restaurant.
Okay, thank you, Chip, Dave.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, so. I didn't expect this kind of minor modification or discussion, to be honest, I'm a little surprised and disappointed that we. Haven't been able to find a tenant for that, I mean, that's clearly what we were looking for as a board when we approved this project. Was a mixed use with a restaurant, it it needs a restaurant in that area, I understand the street is in tough shape and will get done eventually. And it will be better. I just didn't expect that we'd go in a different direction and contemplate office space. I'm just, this is just my initial gut reaction, I'm just disappointed, I don't know the dynamics of trying to. Find a tenant for a restaurant at this day and age, I don't know what kind of rent you're looking for, don't know the financials. It's just disappointing that we haven't been able to find somebody to go in there that would be willing to go in there and. You know, not next week or next month, but maybe by the end of the year or early next year. And I just have a feeling that once this becomes an office, it may stay in office. That's just my concern and it may never become a restaurant. So I just, something to consider, board members, I. But yes, it has to be a formal application, yes, I agree with everything Chip just said about that. And the language should leave the possibilities open, I just have a feeling once, if we were to contemplate that and vote on that at a future meeting. I just, my fear is that it just become an office and stay in office.
Agreed.
Well, you know, Dave, it's not all or nothing either, we could sunset the office use and have them come back. You know, so it's it's not all or nothing.
But I understand, I just, we we spent a lot of time on this project like we do many of these multifamily mixed uses and. That was a key component because it wasn't something that was in the other projects on that street yet. And we said, good, we need a restaurant there, it'll service all the people in that area, plus any of the people in the town and surrounding areas, right? So we thought it was a great opportunity. And we spent time like vetting all of that as part of the project, so the fact that a year later, you know, we haven't found something. That's just, it's unfortunate, it's, again, I'm not in the business, I don't know the dynamics of it. I agree, I'm just voicing my initial concerns and thoughts because I wasn't expecting this as a minor mod.
Mr. Chair?
Discussion, yeah.
That with ground floor retail and activating that area was really. One of the reasons. The building got. Permitted. We've all driven by. I would assume that the owners have. I would assume that the owners have some sort of conversations with, when is Foundry Street gonna be done? Just the paving?
Yeah, we can, we can provide some info on that, Mike, um, Hugo, do you, can you, um, if Hugo, you can uh address that, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, please do.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you, Brian, uh, for the record, Hugo DiBiase. Part of uh DiBiase Companies and part of the ownership group of uh Wakefield Living LLC, so we. Uh, acquired the property with the foundation and the, and the permits in place. Um, and we are, as Brian mentioned, um, near the finish line here. Uh, I believe my team has scheduled the paving of um within the site. Uh, for the first week of May and then trying to um. Tag team along with the frontage um along Grayson Lofts. Uh, to connect to our frontage, because we have to do in front of our frontage and a lo- a little bit paths um going down towards one twenty-eight uh plumbing there. Um, and so we're hoping to do that the beginning of June.
I imagine you, you, somebody's now the building department or public works are saying. What's your, is, what, what's your timeline for doing this?
Yeah, so, so, good question, Mike, let me address that, so we're working hand in hand with Bill Renault, the town engineer on this. Because um you might recall, part of the Harvard Mills um special permit that you guys did a while ago. Required them to pave from Albion Street down to Maple Street. Um, and then DiBiase, this project that was originally a Melanson project that the DiBiases acquired. Requires them to take it from Maple Street, pass their building further down towards Lake Street. Um, and the town, the town has the money to do the Harvard Mills section, that's how that was done. Because the, the town engineer didn't wanna do it at that time, because he figured the road would get, you know. The damaged over time with, with other construction going on. So, so um we're working hand in hand with the town engineer for the towns portion that will be from Albion to Lake. And then DiBiase is gonna take it from Ma- um, I'm sorry, Albion to Maple, and then DiBiase will take it from Maple past their building. So we are, we are in sync and talking to Town Hall on that, Mike.
Um, I appreciate that, the um. It, it, I mean. Whether there, whether it's the condo across the street or the people that are paying a lot of money to move in there. I, and I drive by that twice a day. To see the pictures of the um happy people drinking champagne at a bar. Um, on the uh coating out front. Um, it's. It's upsetting for the area, and I mean, if, 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 this isn't your issue, but the town. If they're waiting for um. More things to be developed is what I'm hearing.
Yeah, so we can give you a little more background on that, because we've actually worked with Erica Kinder, community development in, in our effort, so Hugo, do you wanna maybe elaborate on? On what you've done, so the board can, you know, get a little flavor of, of the efforts that have been made to find a viable tenant to this point?
Yeah, sure, so um I'll just give a uh brief um background with respect to just this commercial. Um, um storefront area, so. We actually engaged with a restaurant-only broker for, uh, which is both uh for sale and for lease. Uh, out of Boston, they have offices across the country. Um, and we engaged with them uh in the middle of March of twenty twenty-four. Uh, and since then, I think we've had maybe close to a dozen tours on site with. Um, restaurant operators local to Wakefield and some from Reading that are looking to move um their existing locations. Um, and the general feedback um that we've gotten thus far. Is that it's not the main drag and it's not there yet. Um, and um, you know, our broker over the summer was working with the town of Wakefield. Um, Erin, I forget her last name, unfortunately, I. Yes, um, and trying to, a lot of the, the, the uh potential. Tenants or, or purchasers of this condo, commercial condo. Uh, we're just unsure of how this works with respect to the rest of Wakefield, where is it? Why is this, why is this better than downtown or a main street or somewhere else? Um, so there's a lot of questions around that. Um, so like I said, we've been at this now for, I think, fourteen or fifteen months of having this listed out there. Um, I, I'm, our firm is a family-owned business and I'm open and honest, we've never received a letter of intent or anything like that. Um, so um, you know, we uh, we've planned all along since we uh acquired the property. Like Brian said, it's all plumbed and ready to go on the outside and the mechanical shaft on the inside for a restaurant. Um, we just, we just haven't found anyone that even wants to start the conversation.
It, but the building was permitted based upon that in, in part. Um, I'm, I'm disappointed is what I'm saying, so.
Yeah, I, I think we are too.
Yeah, no, we are too, we.
You know.
Yeah.
Is it, was it parking or was it paving? That was the issue.
The, the main issue or feedback from bro- from the broker. Um, walking people through the site. Um, the keywords that they would use uh to describe the tour afterwards was. Uh, off the main drag, um, there's no curb appeal, uh, it's not there yet. Um, someone mentioned there's not enough space, there's, there's no basement. Um, but um, you know, it's, it's. I think when, when restaurant operators drive by that area and then they see something across the street at Tono. And they're saying, you know, well, that's, you know, that could be a direct competitor of mine. Um, you know. I just, I, I. I wish it could happen, um, I think it, I think it'd be a great, you know, mixed-use opportunity, I just, um. They're seeing the, 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 the broker, why we picked this broker too, is because they, they really specifically, they're only restaurant brokers. And what they're seeing across the Commonwealth, across the greater Boston area for restaurant operators. Um, especially post-COVID is um not a lot of risk takers, not a lot of people that are willing to, you know, become, be the first one in. Um, because it's hard to capitalize that, it's hard to, you know, prove that out. Um, and there's a lot more sellers than there are buyers or renters right now across the marketplace.
Thank you. Yeah, and the other thing I'll say, we can talk about this more, Mr. Chair, with our formal uh application, but we're not. You know, DiBiases, they're gonna build out their offices here, so they're gonna own this unit, they're not foregoing. Um, a restaurant use in the future, it's all ready to go. Um, and, and we think that that eventually will probably be the best use for this space. Um, but it just doesn't seem to be the case right now. And, and lastly, you know, in my conversation with Erica Kinder on this, you know, her comment was, you know, she understood. Um, and her comment was, she'd actually rather see a viable office operation there with people in it than just a vacant uh. Storefront in the area at this point.
Yeah, Kasumi?
Oh, I was gonna suggest, instead of like looking for the full operation restaurants, would you go for? Like um upscale dairy with tables and chairs, like. Trade your type of food with tables and chairs, like they can go pick up coffees, like sandwiches, like dessert. Like that kind of type? Because you have your building with tenant and then Grayson Loft right there. And then this is the other side of like a train track, so. If people needs to go get like something to eat, like they gotta go to the other side of train track, so if you have something. You know, almost like a convenience store, but like a little bit of an upscale with table and chairs, I'm sure you get like tons of customers. With your, with where you are.
Yeah, I mean, we're open to any concept, and I don't think the brokers limited it on um, on where they've marketed it to.
Um, no, and, and we, and we, and we looked at, um, you know. Quick serve, not a quick serve restaurant, but you know, something that's um. You know, a little more easier on the fit out to keep costs down for tenants, you know, to make the whole dynamic work. Um, you know, it's, it, it's, it's a good-sized space for a restaurant of, you know, I forget the, you know, ninety people or, or so. Um, but we didn't limit it to just, you know, uh, Tono two-point-oh has to come in here, like that's the only option. Um, you know, we did have a couple of, uh, I would say, um, you know. Not quick-serve chain-type restaurants, but not a full-sit-down meal restaurant, we've had a couple operators come in that, you know, do lunches. Or smoothies or juice, and it just, they just don't see the, the. Demand slash foot traffic that, you know, if it was on Main Street in downtown Wakefield. You know, you would otherwise see, I mean, that's, um, that's the feedback that we've been getting. Um, I don't think it's true either, I, I just, um, I, um. You know, we, we, uh, we think that even with an office, um, you know, like we did over at Postmark. We really did activate the corner of that building with our, you know, it's, it's a quasi-retail storefront-type office feel. Um, and um, you know, I, I, it, it was well-welcome and received by that property too, so. Um, um, and. I know it's not the same thing, and Brian may cut me off here, but at that property, you know, there was a restaurant slated mixed-use, there was a property slated at, at the approval level too. Um, and it took four years after the CEO of the property to get a restaurant opened up in there. Um. So.
Okay. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, I mean, I agree, I agree with Dave a little bit, my only concern is also that, like, if DiBiase does move in there. Uh, I mean, if, and they get situated after a year to find somebody, then they'll have to move out. And that might make it difficult for them unless you know another place to just pick up and move again. Is that, I mean, have you thought about that? Moving, moving here and then six months from now, you get settled and someone's like, yeah, I'm interested, you might. You might say, ah, it's too late now, I already moved in, that's what, I mean, I, I get nervous about something like that, you know?
Uh, yeah, so we, so in our initial kind of layout of how we would um lay out the office. Uh, we are keeping in mind that, you know, what we wanna do is kind of one-and-done. The underground work within the space before we pour that slab, so that we are fitting it out with a couple of restaurants in the back. And we're, we're kind of keeping the back of the house kind of an open, you know, back storage room that's, you know, twenty, thirty feet. Deep that could allow for the back of the house of a, of a kitchen. Um, but uh, from a, from a fit-out standpoint, I mean. Um, we don't, we aren't proposing or down the road with the. Application wouldn't propose anything to do with the facade or changing of the windows or the glazing or anything like that, it's purely just on the inside fit-out. Um, and, you know, open to possibilities of, you know. Let's get a restaurant in there, um. You know, as the, as the owner of that condo, I just, I, I mean, it's, it's, I think, activating it. Could, could even help in that restaurant down the road, just, you know, showing that there's likelihood and activation of the. Uh, of the streetscape. But yeah, it's a, yeah, valid, valid, you know, valid point, I mean, I, I could sink money in there and.
Yeah, I just get nervous, you might move there and then put all that work, get everything situated. Nine months down the road, you're settled and someone pops in and says, hey. Uh, oh, you might stop looking. Or you may just not, someone may not even think about putting a restaurant there, because it's like, oh, look at that, it's office space. That'd be a great place for a restaurant, but they just keep on, you know, looking. So, I mean, but I get it, I'd rather be, I'd rather not vacate either for the next year, but. Um, I don't know, I just. It's all.
Okay, if that's it from folks from the board, Brian, I think you've heard some feedback. Uh, you know, maybe, you know, there's obviously some disappointed people here about uh the lack of restaurant use. Maybe it is, you know, maybe there's some middle ground, like I said, where we sunset, make them come back and. You know, I don't know if that works or not, if they're totally motivated to really market the restaurant space or not, but. You know, um. It's been a pretty good company to work with, you know, so. I don't know, think about some creative solutions like that when you come back. Um. I agree that we don't want vacancy there. I've also seen many places in Cambridge, as much as the goal is to get retail and activate the ground floor with retail or restaurant use. Sometimes it just doesn't work. You can't legislate it, you know, uh, folks in that industry know what they want, so we, we've got to let the market work a little bit here too. And uh, maybe, you know, in a few years, if Foundry Street sees more development. The street's paved and it's looking more complete. Uh, someone would look at the street differently, so. Ask you to think creatively, Brian, when you come back with your application.
We'll do that, we very much appreciate the feedback and, and, and that will help us in preparation coming back. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and, yep, thank you. All right. Moving on. Next up is five ninety-six North Ave, Zero North Ave, Wakefield LLC, request for minor modification. I think I saw Jesse on here.
Uh, Joe. This, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna recuse myself as before with this case.
Okay.
So.
Trying to put you in a quiet room.
You're putting him in timeout, okay.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think you have to go in timeout, you just can't comment on it, you can listen to it.
Yeah, that's fine, Joe, I'm just, yeah, Joe, if you just.
I've recused myself hundreds of times and never gone in timeout.
Yeah, like when we did it live, we used to just sit there.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we had to leave the, I think you had to leave the room before, but that's fine, I'm gonna.
I'm just telling you, I have, I haven't when I've gone to time, but I haven't done it recently.
If you just go off-screen and, and hit mute, I think we're good, Joe, thank you.
We'll do our best to refrain from saying horrible things about Joe like we did during the hearing when he was out of the room.
Well, you might, you might, we won't.
Uh, so thank you, Mr. Chair, for the record, attorney Jesse Schumer, uh, representing Zero North Ave LLC, it's nice to see all of you. After a, a number of months, and um, may I say that we appreciate you um accommodating us and getting us on your agenda. With such short notice, uh, having only filed this yesterday. Um, I'm joined tonight, Mr. Chair, by Chris Barages, principal at Williamson's Barages, civil engineers of record for the project. Uh, Peter Sandors, uh, principal at Phoenix Architect, the architect of record for the project. And Dana Lopez, representing the ownership and developer of the project, and all are available for questions. If I may, Mr. Chair, I'd like to briefly share my screen and I'll run through the proposed modifications to this project. That we would request that the board uh make a finding that these are uh insubstantial changes.
Please do.
Thank you very much, so the, as I outlined in my letter that I filed with the board. Uh, there are sort of two classes of changes, and one is civil and the second is architectural, and I'll start, start first with civil. And if everyone can see the, the screen share here, what this that I have up is the approved civil. Uh, survey and layout plan, and I'll zoom in to give you a closer sense of, of where we're proposing some changes. So first off, um, on North Avenue here, you can see a proposed electrical pole and the electrical service running in to the. Uh, transformer in this location here with bollards around the transformer. In this location here. If you look to the um sort of rear left of the building, there's this open space here. And we're proposing to move the transformer to this location, so that it's out of the, the central location here. We feel that's a, a more optimal location for it. What I've put up on the screen now is the proposed modified site plan, so you can see that we've moved this electrical pole to this side of the property. The service comes in here and we're proposing the transformer to be located here. This location requires fewer bollards. Uh, because there's less traffic coming through this area here. Only the bollards that are facing the parking lot are now required. Uh, this does not require any grading changes, it doesn't require moving or changing the size. Or location of the dumpster or the bicycle shelter, we're just making a little bit better use of this space that was otherwise going to be unused. The ancillary benefit of making this change is that in this location here. Where the transformer was previously proposed, we've been able to pick up an additional parking space. So this row here on the previous plan previously had ten spaces. And now we're proposing eleven spaces, so we, we get one additional space, and I'll just go back to the previous plan, you can see ten. Previously proposed and that picked up in this location right here. Going to eleven. So those are the proposed civil changes, and as I said, Chris is available for any. So those are the proposed civil changes. And as I said, Chris is available for any questions about that. I'll quickly run through the proposed architecture changes having to do with the building. This is the, uh, left elevation. And I'll zoom in a little bit here. Um, as you can see in the bottom, this was the approved left elevation and this is facing uh, southbound. As you can see, the, the front of the building here facing North Avenue. Uh, the change that has been made here is the addition of a window in the stairwell here. Previously not shown, now currently shown. Uh, just a very, very minor change. We think it makes it improves the, the appearance of that section of the building by adding the additional window. On the right elevation, we're proposing the same thing. Oops. Zoom in here a little bit. We're also proposing the additional window here, not previously shown. However, in addition to that change, I'll zoom in a little bit further. In the rear corner of the building, there was a need to add an electrical panel here in this location here. So previously on the approved plan, we were showing windows. And on the new plan, those windows have been removed to provide for the electrical panel. I'll just zoom out a little bit so you can see where this is. This is the right side elevation of the building, the front of the building here facing North Avenue. So this is really the far rear corner of the building. The only folks that will see that, um, are the, the people who are living in the, the adjacent apartment complex. Uh, and other than that, the, the birds and other critters that are back in, in the wetland. Uh, so that's the, the sum and substance of my presentation, Mr. Chair. As I said, Peter and Chris are available for questions. Dana is also available. If you have any questions about the progress that's going on with the construction on site and I, I'm also available for questions. Uh, but we would request that these changes be deemed insubstantial and approved as such.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, members of the board, questions, comments? Chip, you got your hand up.
Yeah. On the question of civil, um, how do you propose to have a bike shelter in front of this? That's mobile for servicing?
What are your thoughts on that? Maybe you can, you can tackle that question?
Uh, sure, Mr. Tarbell. Uh, for the record, Mr. Chairman, uh, Chris Sparages, Civil Engineer from Williamson Sparages. The Civil Engineer of Record for five ninety-six North Ave. Uh, so Mr. Tarbell, what was the question about the bike shelter again?
So I have to, I, I'm the town and I have to service or swap out that transformer. How do I do it?
Oh, oh, I understand. So.
First of all, I think it's a much better space. Let's start with that, but I'm.
Yeah. So we've vetted.
Is this bolted down on a concrete pad? What is that bike shelter?
Yes, uh, so the.
Mobile? What, what are we doing?
The bike shelter is not mobile and, um, we've vetted this. Um, let me do this. Is it okay if I share my screen?
Please.
I'll take mine down, Chris. There you go.
Okay. Let me quickly pull up the, the landscaping plan so that you can see the detail of the bike shelter. And let me know when you see that. The, okay, great. Thank you. So it's a concrete, uh, surface with a, a permanent, you know, structure, uh, just a, a covered, a covered area. So yes, uh, it's going to be, it's going to look just like that. Um, and if I switch back to the to what we're proposing to do, uh, did my plan change for you? Or are you still looking at the colored, the colored, uh, drawing?
No, we're at the site plan.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so after speaking with, um, uh, with, uh, Vinnie at Wakefield Gas and Light, uh, there is a sidewalk along here. So what they would do is they would just pull into a, a couple of these spaces. And simply, uh, you know, do what they need to do, um, you know, in this fashion here. If they had to drop um, a new transformer onto the pad here and remove the old one, uh, they would just bring a small, a small crane and lift it over, uh, the bike shelter.
Okay. So it's been discussed.
Yes. That's Vincent McMahon. Um, and, uh, he, a couple more things that, not that it really matters to the zoning board of appeals, but he asked us if we can, uh, have it so that the doors open up towards the, towards the wetland, towards the rear. Um, and, um, he was okay with the bollards. And then, uh, he also liked that we have another straight shot, you know, out to the, you know, out to the street here. So that worked out nice.
Thank you.
You may.
Um, I'm not familiar with this project, but with with taking out the two windows for the electrical panel, is that where the unit is?
That is, uh, there is a, I believe it's a two bedroom unit in that corner.
And you're taking two windows out?
Yes. So there are, there are still two windows in that, in that, um, that unit in that location on the rear side of the building. Where those windows were removed, that's the secondary bedroom. So that I, and Dana can, can confirm or Peter can believe there's still one, one window in that, that bedroom there. Is that right, Peter?
And electrical panel is on the outside, the exterior wall?
Yes, that's right. Yep.
Um, I don't know. I just want to make sure if it's a bedroom, at least you have one windows. Cause it looks like your one window is going to be looking at the transformer in the parking spot.
Peter, can you tackle that one?
Peter, we're not hearing you. Doesn't look like you're on mute, but we're not hearing you. Still not hearing you.
He's on double secret mute.
I'm trying to contact him now. See if I can get him in.
All right. Jesse, can you just pull the, um, the rendering back up?
You, the elevation?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you could zoom in there again, please.
Okay.
So then you, you lost two windows there. I think assuming his concern is where's the window for the, if that's a bedroom, is there at least one window? Is it facing the rear?
It's facing the rear. Yeah. That is, that is the bedroom. It's, it's a second, secondary bedroom. Um, but there is a, the, the window facing the rear.
It appears we have a picture. If we take down.
That is, I think we do. Actually, yeah, we do have a.
Yeah, there you go. It's right there.
There. Okay. Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, I was just going to piggyback on Kasumi, but while we're talking, where was this panel before? Do we? We, are we relocating it?
I think it, it hadn't been located on the, the preliminary plans. So it was, it was, they just didn't know where it was going to go is the issue.
Isn't this normally something inside the building and not on the facade or might?
No, electrical panels tend to be on the outside.
Even for these multifamilies, they're not some inside room or something that I know like gas meters and certain things we've seen on. I don't know. I'm just trying to remember other projects that we've seen electrical panels on, on architectural renderings. I'm they're always on the outside. Am I just misremembering?
Wouldn't use the word always, but often.
Typically, yeah, for this kind of building.
And so this wasn't contemplated and we realized, oh, we gotta have one and we gotta show it. Okay.
Yeah. Yep.
I thought we were, thought maybe we were relocating, just wanted to get some clarity. Okay.
Nope. Nope.
I wanna, I wanna also make sure there's like no noise issues or like humming issues going to the, the bedroom next to it. I don't know how many elec- electrical panels you're planning to attach to it.
This, that, that question I'm going to have to defer to Peter. I wonder if he's, it looks like he's left and maybe coming back here. The, um, the, the, are you referring to the, the panel that's being attached to the building or the, the transformer?
No, the electrical panel you're gonna attach to the exterior wall because that's, you're saying that's right outside of somebody's secondary bedroom. So I want to make sure there's no like noise issues coming from the electrical panel.
I could.
Like any like a humming? Like a low sound?
Yeah. Assuming, uh, Dana, were you going to say something? Yeah, I can speak to the construction of that. We've worked this out with the electrician. We're actually going to build two walls inside that bedroom. We're going to have the exterior wall, which will be insulated. Then there's going to be a secondary wall that is also going to be insulated, uh, just to give it room for the wires and it'll be further away from the electrical panel. So there'll be, uh, virtually no noise coming through that wall.
Would there be like a air gap between those two, two conditions? Okay. Okay.
Yeah, there'll be an air gap. Okay. Anything else, board members?
Nope. Is there a date on the um, civil plan? I didn't see it. I didn't, we didn't get, I didn't get a copy of these prior, so.
There is. Chris, if you have that handy, I'm going to try to find it right now.
Sure. Um, the, uh, the latest revision date is revision number four, move transformer pad four twenty-one, twenty-five.
By your company?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry that I know it's your name and somebody else's. I'm sorry. I forgot.
That's okay. Williams and Sparages.
Yeah. Thank you. No other comments, Mr. Chair? Seemed like minor mods to me now that we've sort of vetted some of the details here.
Phoenix plans, David dated four, ten, twenty-five.
That I got on the screen. I just didn't see the, the date on the civils. So, or the site plan. Thank you. Yep.
Okay. Anything else, board members? Pleasure of the board.
So, Mr. Chair, a move that we find to determine that the proposed changes at, um, five ninety-six North or Zero North Ave, based on the, uh, updated site plans. From Williamson Sparages dated four twenty-one, twenty-five and architectural plans by Phoenix Architects dated four, ten, twenty, twenty-five. Are deemed minor modifications to the previously approved special permit and site plan approval granted by this board or comprehensive permit, I should say, granted by this board.
Can I get a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing, seeing none. Regular voting members and Kasumi. Dave?
Yes.
Chip?
Yes.
Mickey?
Yes. Yes.
Sumi?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. That's unanimous. You have your minor mod. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Project completed. When's your completion date, do you think? Uh, right now we're.
AI then, correct Dana?
Yeah, we're scheduled to be in the fall, uh, shooting for Oc- uh, late October right now. Uh, right now, we are mechanicals have done on the building a hundred percent. We're working our way down from the third floor. So the third floor is all completed except for the flooring. Second floor is, um, cabinets and trim are going in now. Tile's being done. And first floor is being sheet rocked uh, as we speak. Uh, so the inside of the building would be basically completed in August. And we still have a lot of site work outside that we're working on and we have to work with conservation. We have planting of trees behind the wetlands line. So that's what's going to take us, uh, take up the time in the fall. Um, but the, the progress of the building's been going great. Just, uh, just extensive site work. So by moving the electrical line actually helped us because that was bordering the uh, the cul-de-sac system and just in a bad spot, we thought we would be much better on the other side. So, cause we can do it now and get that, get that done and it lends itself to the electrical panel location we're proposing. So, um, I think the time, that most time is going to take at the end for the landscaping and getting all the approvals from conservation. Okay. Appreciate the update. All right. Good luck with that. All right. Moving on, board members.
Just if I may, Mr. Chair, just a quick procedural question. Um, there's no requirement for the board to issue a written decision, but you're, you, you may if you choose. And, and if you would like me to, I'm happy to write, write something up for that purpose. But as I said, you're not, we're not, there's no requirement under the comp permit statute to, to issue a written decision on that.
Yeah, I, I think if we just have a letter for the file, Jesse, that will be helpful for, uh, building department staff.
Understood. Is, is my letter that I submitted yesterday sufficient for that then?
Uh, I'll email you in the morning.
Okay. Very good.
Yeah, it probably will be, but let me just look it over again. I think it's pretty comprehensive. So.
Okay. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up on the other matters, board discussion to review sign by law, recodification.
Who, I hear we have a guest speaker.
We do have a, we have a special guest.
Just remember, this guy's in an old age home.
Can I go till ten, ten thirty? I mean, you guys are leaving awful late or early, should I say, not late. Yeah, you're right. I guess.
Hi, Mr. McCain. Nice to see you.
Good to see you, Jim. I hope you took a nap this afternoon.
No, I didn't. I did some reading though. And I, I did, I did a little bit of back review as to this whole thing. So I don't know where you guys are going with this thing, but I'm here to answer or give you your information or whatever. I should, I should probably start. I should probably start to say, um, this whole thing started with Steve setting up, uh, a meeting basically in August, two thousand seventeen. Um, with, with nine people basically, which included two selectmen. Um, and two re- two, uh, three, actually, uh, people with businesses on the street. Um, and the town planner at the time, Jack Roberto, uh, being the building inspector and the like. And it all came crashing down, um, close to when we've sort of finished it up. At the time, the town closed down because of COVID. And after that, it stayed silent for probably three years. Um, and I had delivered something to Steve. I'd taken, taken the time near the latter end of that basically to pull everything together. Some of the stuff which had already been pulled together plus other pieces, basically to give it to Steve, not knowing where this is going and knowing I was eventually going to leave town or more likely I gave it to him basically to spur him on to bring the committee back together and move ahead with this. Um, but it obviously just sat off to the side in a pile on Steve's desk because of everything else he had to do. Um, but the intent at the time that Steve, um, set this up was you had a, a bunch of people sort of, um, not happy with the, the, the process of the signage code at the time. Uh, Donaco being one, and yet he was the chair for the previous one that actually did the code, which is rather interesting in itself, but that's all politics. Um, and so, uh, anyways, we moved forward with this with everybody and a lot of comments. I took them through the history of the town by looking at older photographs as to how the town looked at different stages in its life. Um, and particularly after the war, uh, when everybody was gloriously happy because it was over. And it looked, Main Street looked like it was part of, uh, Riviera Beach. Basically with all the lighting and the signage and everything on, everything that uh, was out there. So, um, this is, uh, the object at this point was to take twelve years of experience that we've already had with the previous code and see what we could do with it. And how could we make it easier? How could we take some of the landmarks out of it that were a problem in the, in the way that some of the uh, businesses on Main Street looked at it? And, uh, a perfect example of this code because we used it even though it wasn't, um, um, put out yet in the form of a, a legal document was Hartz Hardware. This is what you could do with this code is what's in Hartz Hardware. Um, it, we changed a bunch of things like, or at least allowed for change in a bunch of things and basically having, um, instead of everybody having a fifteen square foot sign, if they wanted to do something bigger, they had to come to the board. They had to come to the design review board and then to the zoning board. Design review board had to write a letter to the, to the zoning. Design review board had to write a letter to the, to the zoning board saying, we approve this, so I don't approve it. And I was up to the zoning board to go through that process of approving it so they could move ahead. Um, we've taken that in this out of the way in that the board, that so, the design review board has much more authority. And if, uh, someone that, an applicant basically doesn't like the direction it's taking. Or the approval that they've got from the design review board, they can always move it upstairs to the zoning board, basically. And make their argument with the board at that point. Um, signage for, um, uh, bracket signs. Stays with the design review board and not go to the zoning, not have to go to the zoning board, which was what, the way it was written. And as I understand, that was so that one side wouldn't block another. And so they were leaving that authority basically in the. Zoning board. Um, it also in this allows for a lot different signs that are more current, currently being used. Than what was allowed in this, in the first, uh, zoning, uh, signage review or signage. Code. Now, for some of you may not know, there are two codes currently. The old, old code, which is mostly handled outside certain. Areas, uh, beyond Ma- beyond the edges of Main Street. Um, and, uh, so we have been in the past using that in those areas like on Water, on Water Street. And some of the industrial areas, basically. And the, this, the other signage code, the one that's currently active. Only in the downtown areas, which are already desi- have been designated for some time. As to where they are. Um. So we opened up a lot of stuff and allowed for a lot of stuff. But as anybody that's scanned through this knows, it's a lot more pages than what we had. And that's because it's been broadened to allow for more at this point. Um, and allowed to mo- more, uh, flexibility, basically. There's also. A chart in there that basically based on this frontage you have. Between the par- party walls in the building, it allows basically for you to have a larger sign. Than the fifteen square foot. You don't have to go to the zoning board. You can deal with that directly at the design review board. And they will give you a number that you can, that you will be allowed based on that. There's also in order to get more variety in town. Um, there's bonus points basically that will be allowed in here if they give us a better design. Than just a bunch of standing letters and a, and a flat. Piece of wood, basically. So, um, it's, it's got a lot to it. Uh, whether people will want to do this. Uh, want to, and I'm talking about people in the town want to do this. Um, and approve it, I don't know, uh, how they're going to feel about it, particularly since it's, it's bigger in extent. But it's also broken down. So if someone knows that they're going to do a, a wall sign, it's all there. You don't have to read the whole damn thing. You only need to read the wall sign stuff and anything that has to do with administrated parts of it, which are nor- more to the rear. If you're going to be a blade sign, there's stuff there. There's, it's all there, but you don't have to go with every bit of it. Now, what I've found. In the past, over my twelve years dealing with this, um, as chair of that board is. There's a lack of support on the part of the town. To administrate this. Now, I filled in a lot of that basically by being more active because I had the time to do it. And anybody that has, is going to become a chairman, basically should have the time. And should have the support staff for this. It's a non-paid position at this point. Um, it's zero compared with the ten dollars you all get. Um, basically, but still it's, it's not, you know, I don't sure how many people are going to sort of vie up for this. And it should be somebody that knows something about graphics and architecture at the same time. And can look at the big picture and see what's best for the town. The other thing is that they don't, the town does not. Um, when someone comes to town, basically, wants to put a business usually checking with the. With the chamber of commerce, a town clerk or other departments, basically, and nobody tells them. That there's a sign code. As far as I know, I never, I never caught it. Um, I, I must say that the community planner, as she came in. She was doing some of that, basically, and asked me to come and meet with a few people. That were going to do something basically to highlight, uh, what they can and can't do before they even submitted. To the board, anything to start with, which I think is. Uh, the best way to create a relationship with a business ahead of their arrival. To let them know what's possible and to hi- find out what they are, what they think they want to do. Um, there are a lot of projects that we passed where we broaden the. Uh, opportunity, uh, in the aesthetics of the signage, basically, for some businesses. They just want to throw a sign up and, and basically start business and they don't realize that that signage. Basically is what draws people in. And if you can make it better looking, then it draws your eye. Faster than just a bunch of signs that are just letters and. And a, and a, on a sign board, basically. The other thing is. That there's so much traffic on Main Street as far as signage, somehow you've got to stand out. And if you're just going to do just a minimum, it's not going to have you standing out. At least not day one. Maybe if your business is, um. Is on Facebook and everybody's writing about you, they'll, they'll show up and you don't even need a sign. Um, it also in this basically allows to put signage on awnings and, and things like that. So. It's very encompassing. It's very large. Um, there are diagrams to help people understand it. It's a separate package in itself. About five pages, I'd say, or something like that. Which was something that they all thought they needed to better understand the print. So I'm not sure what else I can tell you. Um, about this. Got questions? I'm certainly willing to answer them.
Yep, you got your hand up?
What's that?
Chip's got his hand up.
I do. So Jim, thank you. I guess the, the, so we resurrect, so. Give you a little bit of history about what's happening in town. Is, um, there's a codification of the bylaws happening. So signage came up and nobody knew about this package. Our town planner didn't know about it. This, the design review board didn't know about it. Uh, you know, the, the, uh, recortification committee didn't know about it. So we're lucky that Joe. Uh, Pride is on that committee for us and he's been doing yeoman's work. So we said, well. The town pla- so my problem was is that the town. Planner. Was trying to make it simple and similar to Everett's. Which I had a real hard time with. So I said, we should resurrect this. And bring it forward for review and whatnot. So we've all had a chance to look at it. To me, it seems pretty complete. So I guess my question to you is. Is, is it complete? And would you? If you were still in the, this world, would you put it forward? To the planning board to have public meetings on it and to see where the town wanted to go with it? That's, that's really the question. So your history of it. Um, is great, uh, and I know that your work on it's great and I've, you know, I. From a peripheral saw it, used it with ace. Um, like all the diagrams, I like it. It takes a lot of the questions away. Um. But signage, as you mentioned, is a little complicated with all that we do. So. The other thing that has happened in town is that the sign. Review committee has pretty much gone away. So now we're getting all of it directly. So I think your point of. And in this sign by law, i- it's so important to have that committee. Um. So I, I think, I, I mean, my question to you is, do you think it's ready to go to the planning board? Uh, for discussion and public meetings?
All right, that's a double sided question in some ways from my perspective, all right? Yeah, and it starts here. I'm not a. Not an English ma- major, all right? I think it needs someone to edit it, read it, make sure that every comer and everything else is in place. I always expected it would go to somebody basically that had that art in their portfolio. Uh, it's not me. As you know, I like to deal with this, design issues basically. But this course was thrust on me over twelve years ago to begin with. And have the experience with, with reading the codes. And taken, and a lot of what's in here pre-existed, but has been twinked. Some of it's been added, of course, as well. So I, first off. Either if it goes to planning, then someone reads, needs to read through it. Uh, maybe, eh, maybe it's even the other committee basically that's looking at the others, other sections. And clean it up in some ways, but not change the tent, tenor of what's in it. Because then you've taken a lot of the body away from what's there. Um, and to, to take somebody else's code. Basically and stick it on, stick a label saying Wakefield, I don't think is us. Or the town, should I say, it's somebody else. It's, it, you know, it's not even, if you go into that town. And look at this town, they're two different towns. The building structures and everything else are different, basically. So. Um, maybe the town planner has had experience in that area and, and, and that's where she came from. I don't know. And it's easy for her to grab that and she understands it. On the other hand, um, I think that this is, this is now homegrown. Um, you were on the original committee that started this way back when. Um, two thousand ten, I guess, at that point, um, or nine. And so, um. You know, I, I think we should live with what we want ourselves and not adopt somebody else, particularly after spending. All this time working on it, both as a committee group and like. And I'm, I'm sorry to hear that. Nobody knows about this and yet it's, it was sitting on Steve's desk for a long time and he was the proponent for starting this to begin with. So it's disappointing. I certainly am willing. Um, i- if, as a consultant, so to speak, zero money. Um, to sit with somebody in the planning board. And go through what was intended and what was done, what is in this, basically, so they get a better feeling for it. Um, but I, I would like to see it go forward. It's too much work in there just to throw it in the trash can, really. So, um, I guess it needs polishing. Um, in my, it, it may be, you know, someone will say, oh, it's great. No, uh, maybe it's not. I mean, we all know. From the stuff that's been done already to clean up other sections. The conflicts that are between different sections and that's what that group has gone through. They've looked at where there's a bad reference. Or it, it's covered in two or three places and they conflict with one another. Um, I'd like someone to go through it and do the same with mine before it even reaches the town. But I understand that you've got an opportunity at this point to basically clean up the whole damn document, everything, front to back. And we sh- you know, it, it would, either you're going to stay with the old code as it was. And they clean up that or they bring in this new one, basically, um. As a replacement. Now, I will tell you, in the latter part of the meetings before they, before everything closed down. There was discussion about. Covering other commercial areas in town, uh, like this, the area just beyond, um. The railroad tracks on Albion Street. There are a bunch of little pocket areas, four corners, for instance. So some of these pocket areas, basically. And, and Steve, I think, has those noted somewhere, um, in a document. But anyways, um, that's outside of. It can always be expanded, but the question is whether we, whether you should have a new code and whether it should be put before the town.
Other people, you got Jim, he's not. He knows more about signage in Wakefield than anybody I know.
No, I'll, I'll chime in, Jim, and thanks for joining. Um, yeah, I mean, it's a comprehensive sign. I mean, it's, it's long. It's comprehensive. It covers the bases. Um. Uh, I, you know, other than, yeah, just going, having somebody go through it with an eye towards. Can this be the bylaw? What's the applicability? Is it going to replace those existing sections? Is it going to cover the entirety of town? Right? And not just an overlay district that has pockets like the new bylaw does, um, right? Or is this going to be a blanket one? We'd have to sort of agree on how we want to proceed there, but, um. Yeah, I mean, someone may just need to go through it and just make sure it has a bylaw, it stands up to and enforceable and, and, and it, you know, it properly addresses. Um, the applicability and what do you do with the, the stuff that already exists and that kind of stuff. But. I'd rather see this put forward, um. Than trying to recreate or update the two existing ones that, as you said, conflict in some ways and are confusing. So. Happy to do that, but equally important, get a resurrected design review board. Right? It doesn't exist. If you go to the town's website, it still, still has some names out there, not yours, but others. Um, but it doesn't exist, right? So we have to have the town support to resurrect that board. And get some people on it, representative of this board and others. Um, to act in that capacity with the authority to, um, fulfill the, the, the items that are in this bylaw, right? Um, and then take it forward either as part of the recortification and this just becomes part of the recortification, Joe. Right? And, and it gets vetted through that committee and goes forward with the rest of the bylaw? Or it goes through, it's on its own with a planning board, public hearing and signed off as a replacement of the existing signing bylaw. And then gets subsequently included in the recortification because by then it would have been passed by town meeting in theory, in hope. Right? So it could go either way. The recortification is eventually going to be a, a big vote, Jim, at some point. Of the entire rewriting of the zoning bylaw. Right? When it's all done, that's, that's the theory. That's the plan. Um, so either this goes with that. Or if we want to get it out sooner, we do it separately through the planning board and get it out there and then it becomes part of that recortification by. By right, because it's already approved. Um, and we figure out where it fits in and all that. So.
So, Dave, this was not. Um, a plan when it started to cover the whole town. And it doesn't cover the whole town. When you get to c- some of the commercial spaces outside of this, uh, it, that's in the original. Uh, signage code, the old one, all right? Um, is that. It's not covered in, in this to any depth. It would be another few pages basically added or additions to. Other sections already in here. So I would not try to use this for the whole town. And if you did use it for the whole town, if you were to consider it, then you almost have to have a standing committee. Basically, sign review and I. I, I always shake my head on sign review, uh, on design review board as the title for this. It should be sign review, but anyways, be that as may. Uh, too late maybe to change that, but, um, I would not try to use this to cover the whole town. I would leave it as it was originally intended. To cover certain areas of town. And if. It was decided that they wanted to reach out and grab some other areas, like four corners. Then basically add that as, as those addresses basically into the list of other addresses in that area. But to reach down to Salem Street and some of these other commercial areas, I'd say, no. Don't.
Well, that's, again, that's where I've always felt we had two standards and it really depended where the location was. And you applied to different standards. And I wasn't on board, I wasn't part of the process when the, when the overlay first came into being. I just thought if we ever redid this, wouldn't it be great to just have one singular bylaw for signage? And it covered the entire town. That's just my opinion. I just think it should be the entire town.
No, I, I totally agree with you.
Whether this needs to be amended to account for that, that's fine. I'm just saying, I just think we should have a unified sign bylaw for the town. And whatever the neighborhood might be, maybe things need to get tweaked in here to make it work for the entire town. But I just think it should be, we should have a singular standard for the entire town and a singular bylaw, I should say, with various. You know, tweaks as needed to cover the. You know, tweaks as needed to cover the different neighborhoods potentially. But that's just my opinion.
And I wouldn't, I would agree with you that it should cover the whole town. I just, I just don't think it can't. And I think if you look at. This overlay district, they were very tentative about reaching too far beyond because they figured. That when it went to town, basically, it would get thrown out. And so they tried to be somewhat judicious about how they tackled this and how they sold it. In talking to Paul and and probably even Chip because he was on that group. They they basically at least tried to get something to deal with downtown. And not, you know, take the whole apple, just take a bite of it basically and get it going.
So we did that, though. We did it. And now it's been in existence for X number of years. And now we're trying, if we have an opportunity to clean it up and maybe make it. Apply to all. The recertification, at some point, the town meeting is going to vote on a hundred page entire zoning bylaw. So having this as part of that. I don't think is it is the prohibitive part. It's just whatever changes we would need to make to this. To make it account. Again, it's just my opinion. I just. I'd like to see a signage part of the bylaw that. Deals with the entire town. So there's one standard that applies. Well, if you live here, you go here. If you live there, you go there. We've been doing that for ten fifteen years, right?
And and you know, it's. It it would be a little longer time to take those sections of that original code. And incorporate it into sections of of this code. But it would take some time and you could always basically get this passed. And then come back basically, maybe before this final one comes out. Uh, final overall picture basically is to make some modifications within it. Uh, but get this this one through first and then make some modifications that will cover the whole town. I I wonder how the town would vote if you said the sign was going to, uh, this particular. Signage code was going to cover the whole town. I I I don't know the politics. I just deal with the issues basically that got before me, which was to to bring it up to date. With things that are happening around us, out in, you know, Linfield and other places, basically, and. In the market areas, basically, and at the same time, add some flexibility and fairness to it. But without without support of the town, without a committee, a strong committee, basically. You can pass it. But it's still going to be dead on arrival because there won't be any anybody to manage it.
You mean a design review board?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's, we need it. Yeah, absolutely. I hear you. I, you know, I just, I think we as a board have to agree if how we want to move forward with. Either as is or try to make it encompass the entire town or not. And then. Go look at the overlay district. Go look at, you know, the the pockets. And you said Steve may have a list somewhere like this should go along with potentially an updated overlay. If it's just going to be an overlay again. Would we tweak that overlay district as part of this and include other areas or widen certain areas? Again, if it's not going to be the entire town, maybe that overlay district as a map needs to accompany the plan, right?
That was one of those things we covered at the very, very end was what are areas, basically. And like I say. That overlay was intended to be expanded to some other areas.
I think we'd have to figure that out and then again, vet them through public hearing. See where it goes, potentially, yeah.
All right, anybody else? If no one else is going to speak up, I'm of the mind, we need to get this into the recertification process and get it passed as part of that. Even if we have to come back and get the other parts of town, we should take eighty percent of a victory and get it and get the. Sign review committee up and running.
I think this is enough and it's good enough that we can get it going. And you know, there may be so much pushback. From others that we have to rethink it, but we got to get something. And not let. The quote unquote powers to be get any momentum for their thoughts. Because their thoughts are, in my opinion, aren't good.
The the this is classic, let's not perfect, be the enemy of the good here. And. We 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 should roll it in. You know, the recertification committee has done a good job going through, Jim, to your point, if little things need to be cleaned up. They've been doing a good job of that.
Dan Lieber is the perfect person for that.
So should we just give this off to the planning board and and see where they take it to the public?
Why don't you talk to Dan? I don't want to blindside him on it, you know?
He's seen it. In our dual meeting.
Kevin York is on the planning board. He's also on the bylaw review committee with me. So he's been. Asking me for the last couple of weeks if we're ready to hand it over to him. So he can take it. From where, if if we have any comments, if we want to shrink it or enlarge it or whatever after. So I said that we were going to talk about it for the next few few meetings. Uh, so once we're done with it, if we want to leave it as is. Uh, I can send it off to him and then he can. Have his board look at it and see what they want to do with it and see if they want to put it to public.
Do you think he's seen it yet, Joe? Kevin?
Kevin, I don't know.
So I'd get his, you know, I'd send it to him and say. Here it is. This got worked on by this group.
Yes, so I think he he wanted me to, he wanted me to hand him, yeah, he wanted me to hand him something. Uh, I haven't handed him that yet, so I figured I would add hand hand him an amended version of it or just what we have that's been floating around. Dan has seen it.
Assuming that, I'm seeing you hand up.
I went through this and I have a couple. Questions. I don't know if that's something. Like I I can email everybody, including Jim, because he can probably answer all my questions. I have a bunch of.
Email sounds great. Yeah, I think I think you just showed him a ten o'clock meeting.
Everybody wants to log off. I have, I have a bunch of questions. I'll, I'll just email everybody.
Who's the keeper of the main document, though? Is it you, Tom? So that, or you, Joe, so that? If we are going to tweak it, because I have a couple of comments too. And if we're going to actually. Tweak the document before it gets handed off to anybody, who's the keeper of the document?
All right, I have, Steve, I don't, I don't know whether I gave Steve. A thumb drive, all right? I don't remember. I did give him a bunch of hard copies, all right? Of both documents and make sure you keep the both of them together. But I do have. A hard, a digital copy. Myself, so I can pass that off if somebody wants them.
Well, we have them. We've been emailing them around. We have them. It's just. Someone's got to be the the keeper of the collector of comments and making updates. When these questions start coming around through email, that's all.
You have not been the keeper of the document to date. Chip has had the document and he's been the one emailing people's by understanding.
Be the keeper and I don't have the time to do this the justice it needs. Unfortunately, I can't. And I'm not good at coordinating comments and dotting eyes and crossing teeth. That's not my.
Do you want me to do it, Mr. Chair or Joe? Do you have a preference?
That would be great if one of you two would take it on.
You want to take it on, Dave, that's fine.
Okay, so send the comments to email. And we'll just consolidate them again. I I think it's just commenting on a document we're discussing in public hearing, but and then we'll just bring it back. And and just vet, you know, present sort of the final version. Uh, maybe at the next meeting or whatever, when we're ready. By the time we vet these things and we'll just say, hey, this is the copy dated X. I think we should have a copy of the the overlay district too. It it should go with it, right?
I've got, I've got information on that, that I, not the new overlay, but the current overlay. I've got stuff on that I can send you.
And Dave, if I were you, I would just make Jim do all the work.
You know, I got plenty of time, right?
Well, I'm good at dotting eyes and crossing Ts. I've done that. I'm I'm a QA guy and it hurts, so. I I can do the dotting and crossing and looking it over and and incorporating comments and all of that. If. I I don't have a problem with that. It's just, yeah, so Jim, send me, send me what else you got.
Yeah, so, um, let me say, Dave, if you're going to do this. Then I think that you and I should talk. On the matter because depending on what's twinked or what happens, if it's just commas and periods, that's one thing, but. If somehow it spins on the body, somehow say. Kasumi basically finds something that's screwed up. Or it's a reference that's screwed up or something like that, then we just got to make sure that we adjust it in a way that makes sense.
Understood.
All right.
Understood.
I would, I'd be, I'm more than willing to stick with this for a while longer, quite frankly.
As a consultant.
As a consultant, unpaid.
Say you with love and good comments, Jim.
Oh, yeah, right.
And all the change of rails you can drink.
I also know, even though Greg's not here tonight, he had comments, just. I don't want to lose him out of the conversation. Because he said he had a page worth of questions or comments.
Illegal Beagle.
Yep.
Different Greg.
Different Greg.
Oh, oh, different Greg.
We have no, we we've lost all our lawyers. Mickey's final meeting is tonight, so.
Oh, really?
Dropping like flies around here.
Is is he running for a council position? Seems like that's what's happened to past.
I think like Greg, the lawyer, he's running for a parent's position.
That's it. I'm running for soccer coach, basketball coach, girl scout leader and everything else.
Wow. And and those are, those are only the kids at home.
Those are only, oh, there's only one of them.
We got a plan. All right, Jim, thanks so much.
Thanks, Jim.
What you're doing. See you, guys.
Going longer than they should.
It's a little past nine, guys. I gotta, I I've got to get my pajamas on, sorry. Good to see you, Jim. All right, we're down to board comments. And obviously, the first board comment is, uh, thank you to Mickey for everything you've done for the board. We're going to miss you. I'm sure we'll see you around town, but. Best of luck as a soccer basketball coach and. I coached all those kind, well, I coached baseball and basketball and. You know, just tell the parents you have a rule that other, you know, you're only speaking with the athletes, not the parents.
Who knows? Maybe I'll run for something. We'll see. I, um, I just want to say the night I got picked to be on on the ZBA. I watched the video of the of the town council. And I guess there was a a timing issue as to who got resumes in and cover letters in and who didn't, who didn't bother with it or chose not to. And they said, yeah, he's qualified, but. And I think it was Falvey. He's qualified, but he's no Chip Tarba. I was going to kick that in.
Well, who is?
Trust me, there's a lot of people that don't want to be.
Now you know that was a compliment, Mickey.
That's it. Well, I I I've been enormously proud to be on this board, um, going back. Meeting people like Dick Baird, Amy Wall. Jim and the stuff that they've done and the time they've given up. Dave, while you were chair, you were. You you led us through two P M. Meetings, two A M. Meetings. Covid and and the occasional game seven. The Bruins, which we we like paid for that for like a year because we were backed up. And and Tom has been wonderful to me and kind of been my sherpa through all this and. He's been a good friend and Joe, who's seen me actually coach basketball, wasn't impressed. But I'm I'm so impressed with your knowledge of building and the work that you've done on the bylaw committee. Kasumi, all the stuff, um, your your, um. Your attention to detail blows my mind and your knowledge and of design is just incredible. Kirsten, um, I didn't get to meet you yet. But, um, I I'm sure I will soon and, um, I I enjoyed. Seeing your chocolate lab, I believe. Is that what that is?
Yes, the puppy who had to go out. And so I was having a problem there for a moment while she was biting my fingers. Yeah.
And Greg, um, and, um, and and Chip. Put in so much work on this board. It's amazing. And. I'm proud to be on it. I'm proud that my daughter was able to see, um. How you can be a volunteer for your town and really try to change a couple of things. And, um. I'm proud of being on the board. I'm proud of being friends with you guys. So. Thank you. I'm going to miss you and I'll probably be watching anyway on these. It's a little bit sad.
The next forty B, the friendly forty B.
But I I enjoyed it and I'll stop talking, but thank you. Thank you to all of you guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mickey.
I'll see you around town.
Thanks, Reggie.
You bet.
All right, any other comments? I don't think we can top that. So, uh, do we? Amy, did we have any minutes? Oh, yeah, we have minutes of April ninth.
Mr. Chair, make a motion. We approve the meeting minutes of our. Uh, April ninth, twenty twenty five meeting.
All right, do this by voice vote. All those in favor?
Clerk and board comments?
Celtics, I want to catch the fourth quarter. That's my clerk board comment. All right, your first meeting, riding solo as with no gale in the building. So congratulations, we got through that.
Good job, Amy.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Thank you.
See you in three weeks.